I'll probably move the second discussion, all those in favor. To the House of Representatives, we did not make any decisions during the session.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We will thank everybody for coming out to our meeting agenda for the city of South Fulton. At this time, we will have called to order by check five.
Mayor William Bill Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Proton Mark Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Catherine Rowan.
Present.
Councilmember Carmely DeBones.
Present.
Councilmember Ellen Z. Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Nadine Medjeljaren.
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Here.
And Councilmember Cleve.
Present.
All members present.
Okay, at this time, we will have invocation by Chaplain, Father of the faithful. Let us all stand. Let us pray. The gracious God, we thank you. We're grateful, we're blessed. We recognize all the wonderful progress that the city has been making. And we recognize because of your wisdom and knowledge that you have poured upon us all. We actually bless this session. Make it one of the best sessions. Bless our elected officials and all those that are present. And we will forever give you the praise and the honor and the glory. Let us all say, "Amen."
Amen.
Glad you're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor and members of council. First item on today's agenda is the consent agenda. And it's important perhaps to note because we have about two pages of items related to the consent agenda that all these items are considered upon, are considered by the city council in bulk as one motion and one vote during today's work session. It was requested to remove two items, the first one being on page one of today's agenda, the IGA for the provision of nine-one-one emergency communication services, as well as another IGA on top of page two for the provision of eight hundred megahertz radio system access and records management system, RNS, between Fulton County. Both agreements are to be considered separate and not to be loaded on on this consent agenda to be urged on the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. All other items, to my knowledge, are at this time being considered in bulk.
Okay, council, we removed those, those two items. We go back to the regular agenda. May I request a bye? You have one? Hearing, there are no more questions. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the business changes.
Second. I'll probably move the second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Mr. Burress?
Okay, continuing on page three of the printed agenda. This is approval or adoption of the regular meeting agenda. We do have several requests for changes. The first matter is a request from the city manager to defer three zoning-related applications. And more specifically, on page three, under number eight A, Roman numeral one and two, both of which are modifications, and then number three, which is a request for zoning. The city manager is requesting to defer those three items to the April tenth meeting.
City manager, I understand you have people here for the public hearing and you want to give the, to be heard. I believe they did fill out speaker cards, too. For the public hearing?
Public comment.
For the public hearing or public comments?
Just public comments.
Is there a time difference in the vote?
No.
There is no time difference?
Well, there is a ten-minute, for the public hearing portion, there's the ten-minute.
I thought so.
Opportunity. For public comment, it's the two minutes.
Go ahead, I didn't hear you, Mr. Burress.
If we defer and we do not take up the public hearing tonight, then there, they would need to make any comments they would want tonight during the public comment session.
That works good. Uh, Councilwoman Rowan?
So, Mr. Mayor, as they presented, we don't have to vote on them even if we heard, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Councilwoman, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a resolution, twenty eighteen. I have a resolution to establish Estable to Business and Community Council to promote community and business outreach and the other lawful purposes that need to be added to the regular agenda.
Okay, and I also have a request for an emergency ordinance.
Do we vote on that?
Yeah, are you voting on this at the end collectively? If not, you need to vote item by item.
We can do it collectively. Let's do, let's do add, let's do an end of the vote. Because we would if you hit a button.
So, a motion that we add, a motion that we add when I just read, so.
Second.
You add it when you read.
You want me to motion again?
I motion.
Yeah, tell.
Okay, I motion that we add a resolution to establish Estable to Business and Communities Council to promote community and business outreach and for other lawful purposes.
That's second.
I'll probably move the second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That passes, uh, six to one. Mrs. Uh, Councilwoman Rowan?
So, you indicate we want to take these separately, the first before you, or the second matter before you now is the city manager's request to defer those three zoning-related items.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the city manager's request to defer the three zoning items.
Second. I'll probably move the second in discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Mr. Burress.
Okay, the third item is an emergency ordinance for municipal court, and I fully counsel them to speak to it.
And actually, can we go back? Can you amend that to provide a deferment date just to give the zoning applicants notice of when it's going to come back before the council?
Let's amend it. Who raised the motion?
So, earlier when I sounded it, I spoke of an April tenth date. So, was it your intention?
So, just for clarity, the applicants will be presenting tonight, or they're just providing public comments?
Public comments.
They'll be presenting on April tenth, correct? So, I'd like to amend my motion to defer the zoning cases with the set date of April tenth presentation.
Is that, is that clear, Mr. Madam Attorney?
That is correct, to incorporate the April tenth date, correct?
Your second? I'll probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none, vote please. That passes unanimously, Mr. Burress.
Okay, so that takes you back to this emergency ordinance request. Um, legal counsel, if you want to speak to it, or for the municipal court, depending to their schedule or calendar.
Yes, the, after the agenda was circulated, the municipal court judge contacted me and they have an emergency issue that she can explain, but it's, the general extent of the emergency is to add additional court dates and to amend the court schedule. And that is the ordinance that you're being circulated right now if you choose to amend the agenda to consider that item.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for the emergency, uh, is it a resolution?
An ordinance.
For the municipal courts.
Correct.
I'll probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none, oh, sorry, Mr. Rowan?
Um, can this not be a resolution? So, I mean, it's just as, right, an ordinance has to be read twice, right? I understand this emergency, I understand, but as we've done with the police, we did emergency and then we came back and did a permanent resolution. So, I'm saying, can this be a resolution so we can be done, just setting dates?
Well, this cannot be a resolution. Per your charter, you're required, the municipal court is required to amend the court schedule by ordinance. And at this point, there needs to be negotiations. Right now, the dates that are being proposed are for a facility, facility that's being tentatively offered for free, but the municipal court will be contracting with that facility. So, we don't know how long it may be before there are terms that are created to present back to you. So, my recommendation would be to just have this emergency ordinance in place, at least for the next thirty days. It will bend that period and hopefully the municipal court can give the council further update.
Okay, 'cause as it stands currently, we don't have that with community court, although we have it with Union City at this time.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, you're saying that we're going to have the contract, it's going to remain month to month, and I believe.
Yeah, it is not something with prospective union, it's allowing the extension of a additional location with Fulton County.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion? Vote please. That passes you down.
And one more.
There's one more request by the city manager that's for an executive session regarding personnel at the end of the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to add executive session for personnel to the regular.
I'll probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, not unanimously, that passes, uh, six to one. Six, six, towards the lead. It says, all right?
Okay, now, I believe it will be appropriate for you to adopt today's regular meeting agenda as a rule.
I'll entertain a vote.
I motion that we adopt regular, the two that we need, uh, for Tuesday, March the seventh, twenty eighteen, seven P M, as of Monday.
Second.
I'll probably move the second discussion. I would simply say that if we can get these add-ons as soon as possible, it would kind of make us understand what kind of meeting we're going to have. All right? So, hearing that, uh, all those in favor? That passes. All right. Next item, Mr. Burress?
Yes, sir, we have one proclamation on the agenda that's sponsored by councilmember Cleve, a proclamation recognizing first annual spring extravaganza, Sunday, April first, twenty eighteen.
If I could have, uh, Liston Torey Tomlinson and, uh, Old National Entertainment folks to come on up. We are excited as we are approaching our first year as a city, we're going to have our first annual spring egg extravaganza at Creole Park. Uh, we're using Creole Park and it is not just a great egg hunt for both children and adults. Uh, we're also going to have voter registration. We have a very big election and primary coming up and health screening. So, we're inviting everybody to come out. And with that, I'm going to read the proclamation. It's short. Whereas in twenty eighteen, the city of South Fulton celebrated its first spring as a newly incorporated city. Whereas Torey Tomlinson and Old National Entertainment have successfully sponsored family-friendly, friendly events throughout the Old National area for over twelve years. And whereas Torey Tomlinson and Old National Entertainment planned a spring extravaganza that will feature egg hunts for children's grades kindergarten through second, a second one for grades third through fifth, and an adult egg hunt. And whereas in addition to egg hunts, concessions, and live performances from some of South Fulton's most talented UTE, the event will also feature voter registration and free health screening. Now, therefore being resolved, that the mayor and the city council of South Fulton recognize Torey Tomlinson and Old National Entertainment for planning and hosting the first annual spring egg extravaganza and does hereby, does hereby proclaim Sunday, April first, as South Fulton's first annual spring extravaganza at Creole Park Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton. We're going to save the big fancy one for Sunday, but I would like you to save it if you would.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, we want to thank the community of District Six in South Fulton because we raised over three thousand eggs from the community that they donated. Um, and last but not least, we are having an adult egg hunt, but the most exciting part about the event is that we're going to have kid vendors only. Uh, from ages six to eighteen, you will come out and we're trying to promote youth empowerment with our young kids. So, that just makes part of young person to become a business person in the new city of South Fulton one day. So, you will see all, um, kid vendors and as well, since everybody is going to put money into their Easter outfits, we will start even off with the fashion show. So, the first fifty kids that get there in the Easter outfits, they will, um, we will have a free fashion show where they get to rip the runway and, you know, show off their outfits. So, we just like to thank you, city of South Fulton, and we want to make this big. So, we ask that you guys please spread the word, bring the kids out, and adults as well, we have something for you, too. So, thank you very much, city mayor and city council, we really appreciate it.
This is exciting event, I would thank councilman Cleve and those in his district. And I was trying to make some of my friends on the end, these two on the end, let's do the adult. But they started with their bees and stuff. But once again, thank you so much for all that you do. You know, National is one of our, and we're going to make Old National all that it can be. And with people like yourself, we can do that. Thanks very much. No problem, thank you.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. And one more time, here we go, one, two, three. Got it.
We know, we have a contest, we know we're the best dressed.
Mr. Burress? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have received eleven speaker cards. So, if the first four speakers, please, um, make your way to the center aisle and approach the podium. I have Mr. Mike Taylor, Ms. Nikki Cooper, Mr. Brad Hughes, and Ms. Joyce Armstead. Mr. Taylor.
Chair, take one. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Taylor, I reside in District Four, and I'm a member of the Cedar Grove Community Association. I just want to make it clear, when you do talk about your zoning modifications, that we are not in favor of anything that violates the Cedar Grove overlay. And on another positive note, I am so happy that we have a police force, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Nikki Cooper and I'm the H W president for Legacy Automotive Farm Subdivision located in District Two. The Expeditionary Defiance Hotel is an establishment providing accommodations, meals, and board services for travelers and tourists. This was before short-term rentals. On March eleventh, at approximately three A M, a home in my residential subdivision became a crime scene. An individual who owns a home there and is currently listing on a bet, on a, currently listing on Airbnb, was renting that home. The occupants threw a birthday party and on the same night, a seventeen-year-old birthday girl was shot. I'd like to stand before you and say that this was the first incident, but it's not the first in South Fulton. These crimes are becoming more common than we would like to admit. Unregulated short-term rentals have become the preferred choice of criminals, gangs, child traffickers, and burglars. Here in the city of South Fulton, we are behind the eight ball. With the location so close to the airport and quick and easy access to state highways, our city is fast becoming a city of unmonitored rentals. Time is of the essence. Republican Matt Dollar of District Forty-five has already introduced House Bill five seventy-nine as a proposal to regulate temporary rentals statewide. I did not vote for Matt Dollar. I chose not to live in his district. I desire my elected officials to hear my cry of concerns and to take action now. I know these rentals provide a revenue stream for a large number of middle-class homeowners, but at what price? Is one million dollars enough to support the loss of life or is that? Considering this, I would like you to consider this when drafting and voting on our restrictions. Cities such as Chicago impose a four percent surcharge on owners through the use of a city registry. Most importantly, they develop a way for neighbors to individually petition to ban listings in their neighborhoods. The explosion of this short-term rental has exacerbated the affordable housing crisis and worse, it may unscrupulous homeowners actually accelerate eviction. Please consider this, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Joyce Armstead, president of Old Naroos. I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Edwards, Councilwoman Cleve, and Chief Rogers for your support continuously. On Saturday, we had a community cleanup, and I'd like to say we had five adults and three teenagers that came to assist us and which they received community hours. The various neighborhoods cleaned up their neighborhoods and left their trash on the curb, and it was picked up by code enforcement. I'd like to give a special thanks to Officer Caldwell and Captain Catty Cotton Tuce for supporting Old National Area Residents United. We picked up seven hundred pounds of trash, and that shows what a few people can do when working together. Thanks also to the ladies of Devon Shire and the other communities who picked up trash. Thanks also to Walmart and Bojangles, they provided the refreshments. Also, Public Works who provided the dumpsters. I'd like to close by saying, show me your faith by your works, and I'll show you my works by my faith.
Mr. Hughes is not here, Dr. Jesse Hightower, children, Mr. James and Diane, I can't see the last name. I think it might be Hill, James and Diane Hill, Mr. Scott Butler, and Mr. Jarvin Bryant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. I'd just like to take a moment and speak on behalf of the South Fulton Tennis Center and bring three points to your, to your, to your forefront here. I've been visiting South Fulton Tennis Center for maybe about the past six months. Never thought that I'd be a tennis player, but I've been really enjoying it. And even more important, my, my girls, I have three little girls that really enjoy playing as well. So, more recently, I've just kind of noticed, it seems like we're being directed to the rear of the building versus the initial floor that we could walk on from the ground level where we park. So, the three points I want to share, um, I'm concerned about disabled folks who are trying to come to the side or the rear of the building because it's a hill, they would have to go down. So, I just want the, the city to take that under consideration. A second point is that the small area that parents and, you know, local constituents are, are forced to stay can sometimes be kind of congested. So, without us having access to the top of the building, it gets kind of crowded there. So, it's just a point of contention for some folks. And then the last thing is what I've experienced in these past six months were several different break-ins. And so, some of the men that frequent the tennis center very often would just kind of occasionally go out to the parking lot just to kind of detour anything that might potentially happen. So, I just wanted the city to know about that. And hopefully, at some point or another, you know, that top floor is fully accessible for anybody in that means. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
None of the other speakers, Mr. James and Diane Hill, Mr. Scott Butler, Mr. Jarvin Bryant.
Okay, we have two in front of us. All right, Jarvin Bryant, fifty-six oh five, Sabre Bay, Point Fifth District of South Fulton. At first, I'd like to say, I'm gifted with all this, I'm not a spectator. When a member of this council reduces itself to name-calling diminishes every member of this council and every citizen of South Fulton, if they can't be restrained and drops down to name-calling, maybe that speaker should look for a less stressful position. I'm also against the family responsibility bill. I need to respectfully disagree on that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not for regulating responsibility to another authority of our family. The benefits, the benefits have not been shown, there's no been positive results of studies. Uh, there's no positive results that we've seen for this half individually has, uh, with the police coming being involved. Uh, and I don't see any consideration for, um, the families that are left behind when you enter, uh, enter.
I'm listening.
Okay, I don't see any help for the families that are left behind, uh, another adult family member is taken away or whatever they have to do, the loss of money, the time for the job. Uh, and, uh, something has to be done, but not another Nixon-type war on families. Statistics show this hammer is used over, over, over again in our black community and our black community alone. On the H B ten, this sixty-three, I've heard elected officials trying to run the city from the senate seat. That's worse than gerrymandering. If this is not a change and it was set up like this from the beginning for District sixty-one through sixty-four to run and make decisions on employees, then it's already set up for failure. It's not, it's not, uh, the city of South Fulton, it's the city of District sixty-one through sixty-four. And we've already seen how people act when they're employed and their responsibilities are towards, or their allegiance are towards somewhere, somebody outside the city of South Fulton. So, I'm definitely against it, Bill's ten sixty-three, and we need to do something about it. It needs to be stopped. It's, it's, that is a change of what was already in place, it needs to be changed because unless you're running the city, unless you have the authority to hire and run the city, this is not a city, it's District sixty-one through sixty-four. Um, and that's it. But I think first we have to be respectful, and then we have to run the city ourselves and nobody else.
Thank you. Okay, the last three speakers are Dr. Kenneth Walker, Ms. Glazer Collins, and Ms. Brent. The last three speakers are Dr. Kenneth Walker, Ms. Glazer Collins, and Ms. Brenda Jenkins.
Dr. Kenneth Walker, District Number Two. I would just like to rise and simply commend you for hiring our own police. I've lived in this city for four years now, and I'm just excited about that. I informed the police when I came in, Mr. Mayor, that I would no longer be speeding down Indian Road. So that helps it. We've had some break-ins in Wolf Creek, and we've had slow police response. Now I feel safer in Wolf Creek Country Club because we now know we have police presence. In fact, this afternoon, when I came home, they were driving past our subdivision for the first time. So that makes our whole subdivision feel safer. So I just simply just rise to commend you for thinking enough of us because no community can be safe without a police presence. And, Mr. Mayor, that's good alpha fire alpha leadership.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Thank you for putting this feather in our cap and adding the new police department. We really appreciate it. One thing I would like to say is, I feel as though the easement should be revised to include more property that is surrounding the buildings and warehouses that are being built. Also, the dumping of additional traffic on two-lane roads is very bad for all communities. The buffer rule should be revised as well. It should be, if it can, at least a hundred feet. And we have taken pictures of trucks that have driven on restricted roads, and we need to know, who do we turn these pictures in so that they can apprehend these people or find them for driving on our restricted roads, which has been passed as an ordinance? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Brenda Jenkins, and I'm in District Seven. Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm in District Seven. First, I want to welcome you, Mr. Donald, as our City Manager. In the one week that you've been here, let's say the first meeting, your leadership's shown through. That's something that we haven't had since the city began May first, twenty-seventeen. So I appreciate your leadership. You and the city attorney appear to work well together. You brought yourself up to date very quickly on the ordinance, the charter, what's going on with our city, and you're to be commended for that. I'm glad for that type of leadership. I also want to welcome our new police department. You guys look really nice in your new uniforms, and I hope that... I hope that community policing is at the top of the police department's agenda. Please don't just sit in this precinct and wait for a call, but get out in the community. Make your presence known. Not only do older residents, but young people need to know who you are, and they need to know that you are there not just to harass, but to support them in the things that they are doing. Lastly, I want to address the City Council. I think that a lot of the ordinances that have come up on the agenda have been putting the cart before the horse. They have been kind of haphazard, and all of that is due to lack of leadership. The first thing that we need to do is to get a comprehensive strategic plan so that everybody knows what's going on in the city. Then you can have measurements and timelines to make sure that our city stays on track, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. No further speakers. Okay, no further speaking. Ms. Willis.
Yes, I would like to provide some feedback for the gentleman who came up and spoke about the South Fulton Tennis Center. That center is in District Three. At this time, Parks and Recreation is not in the city of South Fulton. So if you want your immediate concerns addressed, you would need to go to the Fulton County Commission meeting and take those concerns to the Fulton County Commission so that they can address those. We are paying them through the IGA to provide Parks and Recreation to the city until the transition is completed. At this time, our transition from Parks and Rec is not until June. We are hoped to expedite that date, but right now, it is scheduled for June. So any concerns concerning Parks and Recreation, please go to the Fulton County Commission and address the commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I would say not to disagree with our council member, but since we are paying and through that IGA, and we will be taking on those services, any complaints and concerns that our citizens have, we are in position to have a conversation with Fulton County and hold their feet to the fire on the services that they deliver. So while I do encourage that gentleman to go to the Board of Commissioners, we also want them to come here as well.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perkins, sir. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, you have one zoning item that's listed on Page Four of your agenda. Wrong numero four, request for zoning, letter Z seventeen dash zero zero four. Applicant... It's a public hearing as well as a consideration of a rezoning request of property at Old National Highway, southeast intersection of Old National Highway, and Big Wood Trail from R four, single-family dwelling district, and AG one, agricultural district, to O I, office and industrial district. That's by Dr. Paul McCoy of Renewed Medical Concepts LLC.
Not yet.
She should present the zoning case.
She can present. I'm waiting.
Oh, okay.
Here we go. All right. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a application by Dr. Paul McCoy. He is asking to have the property rezoned from R four and AG one to O and I. He wishes to develop a forty-nine hundred... Sorry, forty-nine hundred... Excuse me. Forty-nine thousand square foot medical office complex of over five acres. There is a variance that's currently being considered by the zoning board of appeals that will be heard on April nineteenth. It was originally heard on February fifteenth, but that item was deferred. And the reason behind that was because of council. They were waiting for council's decision first. This item is located in the District of Six. This property is located on Old National Highway. You will see on the illustration before you that the property is zone AG one and R four. It's directly across the street from an existing O and I property. To the rear of that, you will see townhomes to the rear of that. Current view of the current property now is undeveloped. This property will have a site plan review process that will go before our city engineers to ensure that it's meeting all required conditions. This is the view going into the residential location that is to the rear of that property. Okay, so currently, you're going to see a site plan of what would be developed. There's two structures that the medical offices will have to the rear of that, which is located here. That'll be your townhomes. There is a burn located between these two properties, which will show that the properties, the residential pieces that are located here, would not be able to see into this site because of the burn. The burn does protect the visual of being able to visualize and see these properties of the O and I zoning. Here are the current illustrations of this property, the proposed illustrations, shall I say. They will be meeting any development codes regarding any building materials and so forth. So currently, the property being zoned AG one and R four. That's residential. So staff felt that because the property is currently zoned residential, that would be conducive to what's going on on Old National right now. The complaint also allows for us to see that this area would be better developed or zoned for institutional, community, live work, public, and semi-public open space. So this comprehensive plan or this rezoning will allow for that to be a complement to what the comprehensive plan is stating. Should this property be rezoned, staff is requiring that this property also abide by the Old National Overlay District as well as any other property in that area. Staff is recommending approval. The planning commission recommended approval on February twentieth as well. And the applicant is present. Should you have any questions for him directly?
Right, this time, you can open it for public hearing.
That is correct, sir.
Do you have any emotions about that? Mark? Yes, sir. Did you open for a public hearing? I just... I have emotions for it. Yes, sir. Okay, I have emotions. I'm hoping for meeting of the public here. Probably move the second in discussion.
I have a question for Sheila.
Well, let's get the motion, ma'am.
Okay. So for the purposes of the public, I know you mentioned that the zone is being requested. Can you... Yes, go back. Thank you. Okay, so the request is to rezon R four and AG one to O one. Can you explain what R four and AG one is, and then what O one? Is that O one or O and I?
O and I.
O and I, I guess.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So R four and AG one are both residential properties. So R four is definitely a single-family residential lot. It means you can necessarily have four different structures within that one area. And then the AG one is more agricultural, which means you'll find more farm land in that. Along Old National, that can be a bit difficult to develop those two things along the immediate highway of Old National. The complaint does support the O and I, which is office and institutional. Usually, you'll see medical offices. You'll see something that's very similar to rehab facilities or anything of that nature. Definitely anything that's rehabilitation and so forth. Will there be physical rehabilitation and things like that?
So one last question. So I can... I see the R four. I can understand why there's a R four. So where did the AG, the agricultural one, come from on that?
So if I can speak on that, a lot of the zoning could be a little bit antiquated because these zonings have not been requested to have changed in a long time. So those zonings have been in place for many years. That is something that we wouldn't necessarily have control in that. Until the applicant comes before you for a change, those properties will remain that until that time.
And what that does, Councilwoman, is like that, you know, you can come on Old National, build a big wall, or AG one, and let it be real. And that's why it's so good, and it's so good that we get rid of the old zones and in cases that we can, contact the owners who have the AG one designation. Try to get them to change it. But right now, AG one means big wall.
So is this something that we should address in our comprehensive...
Sure.
But we have to contact the owners that were under this zoning before we can change it.
Right. They don't have to do it now. We can contact them and request that.
Right. We'll speak on that a little later, in a few days from now. But right now, yes, that is definitely something that they can have.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Any other comments?
How tall are the buffers between the residence and this property?
I'm not certain what's how tall the burn is, but not sure on that. I don't have those kinds in front of me.
Okay. And what type of medical services are being proposed?
I will definitely refer that to the applicant. He is present.
Okay.
This time, applicant. Come forward, Doc. Now, it's going to have a question.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Of course, I would like to know what type of medical services we will be providing.
It would be a mixed use of medical services. It would vary anywhere from pediatric to geriatric services, rehabilitative services as well. Those are some of the potential people that are interested in the facility.
Do you have any questions, Doc?
So going back to, do you know, do you have any information about the buffers from the residential? How tall are the buffers, and what those buffers would actually be?
Those buffers are actually were already in place, but just to give you a little history of that land. That land was purchased by Mr. Al... Dr. Al Mauki about thirty years ago, nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two. And at that time, he purchased the land that the homes that are in the back are also part of. At that time, he then segmented them and left the land, essentially, the interior of the property because he knew that no one obviously would want to build, and obviously, the builders would not want to put homes up on the street. So he split that out so that at some point, if someone did, you know, convert it over, that they would have an opportunity to do it. But just speaking to him prior to our purchase, the reason why they had none of those is because they did not want to pay any higher taxes. They left us in that position. Now, in reference to the question you asked, in reference to the buffers, those buffers are probably about forty or fifty feet in the air. I mean, because what they did was they built a burn, and then after they built the burn, they actually planted pine trees on those berms. And those pine trees are probably fifteen to twenty years old at this point, and so they're pretty healthy trees.
Any further questions, Doc?
Do you have any... Do you have any other medical centers that you have out there?
No. Well, yes and no. We do. We actually have... Our organization has actually six locations, not totally comprehensive like this, but we do have six locations, and we do already have business in South Fulton. You know, we actually probably have the largest privately-owned affiliation in South Fulton, to be told to us. We have five locations in about six miles.
Any further comments?
I just want to say, thank you. It's just great to see a facility of this nature providing those types of services in the Old National area. And I think that this is the beginning of a lot more to come. You could have gone anywhere you wanted to, but you came to South Fulton, and we really appreciate that. And I'm sure Ms. Jackson will tell you in a minute how much she appreciates you coming to Old National. Thank you so much, Doc.
Thank you.
I'll take the motion to close it.
I move that we close public hearing in a second.
Probably move it second.
Can we... Can we go ahead and prove it?
Well, just let me get this... Let me just put this through right quick. I know you're excited. Let me get this. Can y'all both close public hearing, please?
I move that.
Just want to go ahead. Ellen, we will let you prove.
I move to close public hearing.
Probably move it second. Any discussions? Okay, go ahead.
We want to allow comment. From our public, I believe.
I think the public wants to comment.
Go ahead.
And so our public comment, usually the question is asked if there is anyone for or against this.
Sure. Any about for or against? I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Baker. Come on up, ma'am. Come on up. Mr. Venable, somebody. I'm sorry. I should have asked that question.
Excuse me. My name is Mr. Thanh Coleman in District Four. I am very, very happy to see this. Some of you may remember that I have worked in a number of capacities, and when I was last here, I mentioned quite a bit of experience that I had helping to usher in the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare in multiple states. Now, my wife is... runs part of the anatomical pathology lab at Grady Hospital. She is an immunologist and microbiologist. She is also board certified in molecular biology. We have been looking for a location to open a clinical laboratory. The perfect location was in Union City, but I didn't want it in Union City. I'm just saying. So again, I would be very... So, I, again, I would be very happy and very interested to speak with him, and I'm certainly glad that we can, can bring something to South Fulton and help fill the medical drought that we have. So, I'm certainly in favor of it, and I hope to, uh, talk and work with Dr. Cor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council member, and I, and Ms. Cooper from District Two. I'm excited as well, as you may, to see the building proposal here, but I just want to counsel, I just want to, excuse me, um, offer some advice. In my professional life, I'm a director of revenue reimbursement for a large healthcare system here in Atlanta, Georgia. And I just want to, I don't know if this is legal or not, but my recommendation is that we also find out if the physicians who are planning on occupying that space do accept Medicaid, Medicare, particularly on Old National in that environment. That's one of the things that will happen, and it really makes this very profitable for people who come into our communities, but they only accept traditional commercial care payers, and so we should make that recommendation.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Angela Curry, I'm in District Six. I am for the medical center, but not, not in the area that they want to put it, because you have too many residential areas over there. The traffic will be off the chain. You got Old National where Walmart says that they, all kind of places over there put a medical center because they've enclosed everything up over there. I mean, that, that whole strip mall is empty just about. That would be more feasible to me to put a medical center that's already up and established than to put it in the middle of two residential, you have, uh, I live in Crill, on Crill. You have Crill on one side, and then that other subdivision on the other side. It's going to cause to me a big headache.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michael Venable in District Six. I, I commend some of your questions because you're on the right track. I like the medical center, it's a good thing, but we are not thirsty. There are things on the variant side that I know that you're not going to hear. That's a different, different committee to hear that one in there. But some of these are disturbing. If you look at your site plan and the map, and I think you were hitting on it with the burns and the things about that, to setting precedence for other types of things to come in and do the same things, that's a problem. I like the medical center, glad he's coming, I think it'll be a great asset to the community in there, but long-term effects, if some of the waivers and things go through, that sets a bad precedent for anybody else that wants to come in this court and do some things. And I've had that thrown in my face multiple times over the last fifteen or twenty years, that somebody lets somebody do something, and they didn't let the other one do it till they had to let everybody do it. I'm okay with the zoning, I'm okay with you approving that, I think it's a great opportunity in there, but let's not get so happy that we overlook the deeper issues of the zones. Any further comments for against? Hearing none. We did, we have the motion to close. Okay, all right. Uh, Sheila, would you come back up, please?
Do we, will we need to do any, um, survey or traffic studies or anything to see the impact on the residents? Um, or have you all done that?
So, the impact study was not necessary, um, for this property. Definitely the rezoning, um, was just that, it wasn't anything that required an impact study.
Did it require any type of public hearings or did it mean?
Public hearings? Yes. So, the applicant, the process that we have with the city, we, we go overboard with public comments and public hearings. So, what happens is the applicant is required to have his own public meeting with the community. Uh, we also host a meeting that the city does with public comments at City Hall, and then this will be the third time it's being heard. So, anytime an item comes before you, it's literally the third time the public has heard it.
So, he's had two public meetings?
He's had one, but he's had on his own. We require that he show, um, documentation of sending that out to a quarter-mile radius of the property, as well as it being hosted by City Hall, which is something our team does. And then the third meeting is tonight, so it says that his item has been heard. I'm sorry, planning commission, it's been heard three times by tonight. Oh, but that's four, planning commission.
And for those meetings, did you all take the role where, how many, uh, people attended this?
Um, do we have that with us?
It may have been in the, uh...
It should be in there, I don't have that.
I think when I, I looked at it, it was maybe five or six.
Okay. And he, and he sends it out by, by deadline that we give, um, regardless, it has to be, it has to happen before the planning commission on certain, on a date before. So, again, like I said, this, this information has been presented to the public for a time.
Okay, and are there any HOAs in that area? Were they, uh, the president contacted or communicated to?
Whatever areas that were within that quarter-mile radius, they were notified. And that's by code, that quarter-mile radius.
Ms. Jackson? I'm sorry.
Hi, Ms.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
I guess I'm trying to get some clarity. Um, I heard that you, that it will be the same, that we need to be careful making, um, certain exceptions for some because you have to do the same. And I'm trying to find out what exceptions did you make?
Uh, I'm not sure on what he was saying. I do know that there is a variance on this property that I mentioned before. Um, that information will go before the Z B A this month, and they were waiting for your decision before the variance can be heard, because it's a rezoning based on this, this is a variance based on this rezoning. So, basically, there are some things that they are requesting within that variance that will be necessarily determined by tonight's vote. So, I'm not sure what he was referencing, I can't, I can't make comment on that.
And, uh, Ms. Jackson, you know that the B C A votes against us, and we don't have them to come back based on what they said.
And I will say that this, this decision tonight determines if the Z B A will even have a decision.
Right.
So, basically, if you deny this request, they will not be heard at the Z B A meeting for a request, because the, the variance is based on the actual items or listed, uh, regulations within the O and I zone.
And like, once again, the B C A says, whatever the B C A says, that's...
Yes, they are final, or they do not necessarily report to you, they have their own decisions, they make their own, in their own body.
Let me, let me, Sheila, let's make, let me, let me say something about that to you. In all my years, we've had land use plans, and I continue to tell people, please come out and, and participate in the land use plan comment. I'm looking at this audience, I see, I can pick out the people who come all the time, every time. I'm gonna say to you today, please come. Make decisions on land use plan, make, let us change some things. If you do not come, this is what you get. And we are required by law, when an applicant comes in, he has to do A, B, C, D. If he does A, B, C, D, you can say how many people came all you want. If it was, if it was publicized properly and notified properly, based on, based on our rules, you're supposed to come, this is the what, the fourth meeting?
This is the fourth.
And the B C A would make it fifth.
B C A would make it fifth, that is correct.
When is the B C A meeting?
April nineteenth, I believe.
All right. If it doesn't go your way tonight, the B C A meeting will be April nineteenth, and where is it held? Here, right?
Yes, sir.
It's held here at this facility, what time?
At one-thirty.
At one-thirty. So, if it doesn't go right, at, I want to be on, I want to be on, don't ever get people late, you already did. But at one o'clock, and remembering that what I said, whatever the B C A says, it's final.
Go ahead, Sheila.
That time of the day makes it very hard for the working, uh, constituents to come out.
And I understand Fulton County, um, keep in mind, we did adopt to follow their rules and their regulations and their ways of order. That was how it was done when it was B C A. Um, now we have the Z B A, but at the same time, that one o'clock timeframe was the same, we, we adopted from Fulton County.
Is there a way, I, I just think you'll get more active engagement if you had it towards, I mean, one o'clock for the day.
Actually, the interesting thing is we have more individuals come to our zoning board meeting than we had in our planning commission, we have the planning commissions in the evening.
Uh, I think it's something, listen, Ms. Jackson.
Yeah. I, I, I just want to make a, um, a point that you said this was a war time. It went before the zoning board commission, which was the evening meeting. You are, I know you're really diligent, it was advertising, you put that post in, do you all post on the doors?
We are required to post by, the property has to post on the site, that sign is still out there.
And then y'all put signs out.
On our doors. We also have an email notification that we send out to all individuals who have signed up for the email notification. Uh, we go far out for a notification.
And y'all put signs out, right?
That is correct.
All over the community?
All over the, with the site itself.
Right. And then you are, you are advertising illegal organs?
That is correct. For the same organ that we use for this location, in this meeting.
Ms. Jackson?
I'd like to make a motion.
Right, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Z seventeen...
Okay, go ahead.
To approve Z seventeen dash oh oh four.
Second.
Second.
Properly move the second, any further discussion? Mr. Baker, go ahead.
Um, I'm for this, but it's important that I, uh, I guess disclose, or fully disclose, that, uh, Dr. Black, who's my family dentist, so I would like to abstain from this vote, albeit I am for it, but I just want complete transparency.
You need no care needs.
I say my family dentist.
That's fine, you have the right to abstain.
I just want to be clear to the public.
That's, that's pretty good.
You did.
Okay, uh, just, uh, now, let's vote. That passes. That passes.
The next item on your agenda, under ordinance letter B for first reading, this is sponsored by Councilmember Gilleyard, I think she stepped away. An ordinance to amend Title Six, health and sanitation under the state law to drive for enforcement of air quality standards and for other lawful purposes, and here she comes.
The purpose of, uh, this ordinance is to make sure that we abide by, uh, the state's, um, air quality, and it's going to be even more important as, um, um, more and more industrial-type development comes to our area with trucks and other stuff that believes the air. And so, uh, this is the first read, and I want you to note on page three, um, the section six one four, six foot, there is your four, it's going to be eliminated because that's already included in the smoking, uh, ordinance. So, that's going to be deleted as well as the, uh, the violation part. And so, by the time it comes back to you, there'll be a couple of amendments to it. So, I just wanted to note, wanted to note, what, uh, ordinance is local that, for that clean air.
Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Clark? All right, the next item that was added to today's agenda, the first item is sponsored by Councilmember Willis. It's a resolution, we'll be assigning it number two thousand eighteen dash zero twenty-one, a resolution to establish the South Fulton Business and Community Councils promote community and business outreach and for other lawful purposes.
It's actually sponsored by, um, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Gilleyard, Councilwoman Jones, and myself.
You want to get in? So, I got a resolution and ordinance, what I'm doing? Resolution. Okay.
It's also sponsored by Councilwoman Brown.
All right, we got that established, you want to make a motion?
Yes. I move to... I move to approve resolution, um, two thousand eighteen, eight, eight, a resolution to establish the South Fulton Business and Community Council promote, to promote community and business outreach and for other lawful purposes.
Properly move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Mr. Clark? Let me see, I don't see any names on this one. This is an emergency ordinance, it was also added to today's agenda, amending the municipal court schedule and for other lawful purposes, we'll be assigning it ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero twenty-one.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council. Um, this ordinance, uh, let me back up, with the transition of the police department, we needed to develop a, a schedule for first appearance hearings. Those are people who have been arrested in our city, um, who have not made bond within a certain time period. Um, I did, just to kind of be completely transparent, I did issue a standing order that says anyone who, um, there are certain exceptions, because there's exceptions to every rule, but generally, if you're arrested in the city of South Fulton on, uh, traffic offenses, um, uh, nonviolent offenses, you don't have, um, failure to appear, you don't have any, um, extensive criminal headshots. Uh, there is a, a standing order on a twenty-four-hour hold, okay? So, that means that if you can't post bond in a twenty-four-hour period, um, assuming that you meet all of these criteria that are obviously put in place for the safety and welfare of our city and our, our residents, um, then you can be released from, uh, uh, jail on a, a one thousand dollar signature bond, okay? But what we have now is we have to, we need to develop a schedule for first appearances. So, those are people who don't meet those criteria to get out on a twenty-four-hour signature bond. We have to, uh, provide for them an opportunity to come before the court, um, so that we can set a bond, we have a first appearance hearing, and if necessary, bind the case over to the appropriate, uh, court, whether it's Superior Court or State Court, or if my court retains jurisdiction, okay? Uh, and so this schedule, there's a ca, maybe there's a case called Riverside versus, uh, McGlocklin. Supreme Court decision that says people need to be seen that are, anyone that's arrested, except for on a probation warrant or something like that, need to be seen within forty-eight hours. What this schedule provides, uh, I believe that forty-eight hours is, on, on most days, uh, a bit extensive. We can do it, we can do it better, and so I'm committed to doing it better. So, we have, uh, court six days a week. Uh, my staff is committed to working six days a week, and that's what we're going to do to get it done. The day, our day off is Sunday, um, so I, I do believe people have it sometime off, sometime away from work. But this schedule, um, provides for first appearance hearings, uh, in the city of South Fulton. So, that's what the emergency is. Um, as you know, we utilize Union City, I, uh, I did ask our attorney to draft this relatively last minute. Today's the first day that I've seen, this moment is the first day that I've actually seen the, the, uh, ordinance in this form. Um, as you know, we use Union City per our contract on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And so, we have arranged our first appearance hearings on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays to coordinate with the times that we already use Union City's courthouses. However, Mondays, Fridays, and Saturdays, um, we have reached out to, uh, Mr. Paul Howard, uh, the district attorney for the, um, for Fulton County about Community Court, which is located, I don't know.
Next door.
It's a few hundred feet, yeah, next door, a few hundred feet away from where City Hall is located. Uh, that building is not being used significantly, and, uh, he has agreed, um, very graciously in a last-minute request to allow us to utilize the building in this emergency fashion. Certainly, we'd have to put together some sort of more permanent solution, and I believe the city manager and I are working on that, and we should have something for you for that. But, uh, this is just kind of to get us through, um, this weekend. Um, so, starting on Friday, we would utilize Community Court, so, uh, get us through this weekend until there is a more permanent... Um, so starting on Friday, we would utilize Community Court, so get us through this weekend until there is a more permanent, um, solution put in place.
What's the financial impact?
Uh, Mr. Howard is graciously allowing us to do this for free at this time. Um, there will be a charge at some point. I'm not expecting him to, to let us use it for free indefinitely. But, uh, given our urgent need, um, he has agreed to allow us to utilize the, the building on a temporary basis at no cost right now.
What about the financial impact that those who may be working over?
Uh, well, in the courts, we don't work overtime, we work. And so that's just the way it works.
Nobody knows overtime by doing that.
There's no overtime.
No, so at this time, under this emergency ordinance, we've worked out a schedule that will keep everybody part-time. There will, over time, be a financial impact, but we also expect additional revenues from new cases. And so we're working through that process now, and we believe.
Saying, just make sure I'm clear, you saying there will be, the financial impact at some time?
There will be a financial impact over time, yes. Currently, the schedule that we have worked out and the agreement that we worked out to have the building at no cost will allow us to operate in a part-time fashion until we figure out this full-time solution.
My, my question would be at some point in time, you would have to bring us back, the financial impact before we continue to do.
And that is a part of the April tenth piece, all of that budget, mid, mid-year budget activities will be a part of that.
I got you.
And it's fall within that timeframe.
Okay, Mr., Ms., Councilwoman Jackson?
And I guess I'll address my interview, you said April tenth, are we gonna be looking at individuals working full-time?
No, we will not. I think the...
Are salaries gonna be increased?
So that may be a part of the plan, to increase the amount of hours, but keep everybody at part-time. I'm looking at three scenarios right now, and I will present the best and most effective one to you. I think the biggest area that we are concerned about and wanna make sure that we're looking at is actually the space. So currently, you know, we're at Union City, I know there's been talk about, uh, fifty-six-hundred, uh, Stonewall Tale here as well, but also the community courts and other places are an option, and so we're gonna look at the most, uh, effective location, which is really where some of your costs will come in, and so we'll offer a holistic, uh, solution to, to the council at that time.
On April the tenth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
I know you said, Mr. Howard said it is free, but now, uh, I'm just kidding. Like, I'm just curious, like, if it's, like, if that month, or like, do we have any gauge?
So, so we, we have a meeting, uh, scheduled with Mr. Howard in early April. This will coincide with, um, in preparation for the full presentation for you. And so, what, essentially, I begged, uh, Ms. Jones begged, uh, Mr. Howard to, uh, help us, and, and that was what he allowed us to do, to get us through, because obviously, if we, any sort of permanent solution that we use, that we present for Community Court would need necessarily to involve some sort of MOU, IGA, whatever, with Fulton County, because it's their building. Uh, but Mr. Howard has control over the building, because it's Community Court, it falls within his jurisdiction. And so, um, it was just begging, and, and, uh, he is agreeable to allowing us to use it, uh, for these, on these specific times. Uh, I think it's with a three-hour window, so we got an hour to set up, an hour to hold the hearings, an hour to break down and get out of there. Uh, we can do it in that time period, we're committed to doing it in that time period, um, because, you know, as I said, he's, he's just been very gracious.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the emergency ordinance limiting the court's schedule and for other lawful purposes.
Properly moved the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all... Sir?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, will you still be attending the meeting on the tenth of April?
Yes, is that that Tuesday at three-thirty? Uh, that is the, that is the intent, obviously, that starts to run into this meeting, which I mean, you certainly be present for. We have hearings, we have court all day on the tenth. So my goal is to be there. If I'm not there, I can, I, you know, Ms. Coefield obviously will, will have to attend in my space.
Right. I guess, I didn't, I didn't see you respond to emails, there was email sent.
It wasn't.
And I, I, I wanna entertain every option of every door that's available to us.
Correct.
So if you would, please res- respond to the email, because if we need to reschedule, I think they'll accommodate us.
Well, I, I certainly will. I, I brought up early on, before that email was sent, initially when they asked my schedule, I've told people that Tuesdays is not a good day, because we have two planned arraignment calendars, and then I have council meeting afterwards. So scheduling something at three-thirty on a Tuesday all the way downtown makes it impossible for me to finish up Union City, get downtown, and get back here. So that's, that was the reason for me not responding. Um, I indicated to that, them that initially, when they sent out the first meeting request on a Tuesday, I told them that exact same thing. And so, uh, but I will certainly respond, but I want you to understand that that's the to, my responsibility at this point is to make sure that Tuesdays, planned arraignment calendar, I'm present. And so, I don't like to commit to things, and that's why I tell people ahead of time that Tuesdays are generally not good days.
So with respect, what I'm saying is, if they are aware, maybe you need to remind them.
Okay.
And let them know, hey, I'm not free on Tuesday, let's try to reschedule it another day. Maybe they could reschedule it, uh, prior to the tenth, so that it could, uh, assist our city manager in coming up, you know, with some type of solution.
Mr. City Manager, you need to pay him that, because, you know, we have more, we see more and more of that every day with, uh, people requesting of your employees.
And can you address what we're talking about?
So there is a, there is, people wanna explore utilizing fifty-six-hundred Stonewall Tale as where we would host, uh, court. We've accepted the meeting, and we have quite a few staff members, I think you saw, have accepted. And so while we want the judge there, she doesn't necessarily have to be there, because we've met on it four different times and understand what all the options are. We initially accepted it, and we actually have a call-in to Commissioner, uh, Arrington's office to talk about the scheduling, to make sure that our staff are there, so we're on it, and we'll be responding soon. And so we are all on the same page, and that's why I accepted the meeting, and we have others as well. But again, that's something that we'll follow up on and make sure that we address it appropriately. And so we're looking at potentially moving it up from the tenth, or moving it back, um, a few days, but we haven't had a response back from the Commissioner's office.
Uh, if I may, just with clarity, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to let my colleagues know. Uh, there was a, a inquiry prior to us having a city manager in reference to us using this address for courts. Uh, I spoke with the mayor, who was acting at that time, he advised me that it was okay to pursue this conversation, and I did have the conversation with Commissioner Arrington, Commissioner Arrington involved the judge, and, uh, they seemed to be feasible with coming up with a schedule to communicate. Since then, uh, the judge was brought in on it, uh, I think Councilwoman Willis was brought in on it. Nonetheless, now that we have a city manager, I just responded to all of the emails, and I would like to actually let them know that I won't be attending, and just let you now take over that. I just wanted to feel that void, to explore every possibility at that time. But now that you're here, I don't need to be there, and I'll let them know via email. But I would like for everybody else that's involved to just respond, let them know, um, to...
Are you, he still has to floor it?
What?
To, to, to just move forward with, um, I mean, gi- given that, uh, Commissioner Arrington was, you know, gracious enough to even entertain something that they had already said no to, from my understanding, so.
Got it. And I think we're on the same page. I mean, we're exploring every option. I think the judge kinda mentioned that, uh, there are a few challenges with even being at Union City. I mean, there are moving here or potentially Community Court. So we're looking at all of those options, and we definitely wanna take the meeting so that everybody gets on the same page and appreciate all of our council members kinda chiming in and making that option aware.
And with that being said, given that I don't wanna attend a meeting, I think that the, the main thing that we do need to take into consideration regarding our judge is that the, uh, suggestions or the, uh, conversations about the lack of security to this building and everything else that comes into play with us utilizing this building. But her safety and the safety of everybody else that works there is paramount. But I, I, I know that we did make this statement in early January, that we would explore all options, and we told that to the public, and, uh, that's all I wanted to make sure we did. So I, I wasn't overstepping my boundaries, the mayor did allow me to have that conversation with Commissioner Arrington. I just want my colleagues to be clear.
We can, I think, are we getting a little off?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Uh, your comments are deserving.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna say that I don't want to attend that meeting either. I think that you and the city manager can handle that, and I know a little bit to be dangerous, but I know that when you're talking about courtrooms, you have to take into account security concerns and all of that. So I do not wanna be, I mean, he, we have a city manager, and then you're the judge, so you all can work that out.
Alright. They're probably moving second, aren't they?
Yes.
Uh, a vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
See, that's two more items that were removed from today's consent agreement. The first item was at the bottom of page four, an emergency item, IGA for its revision of nine-one-one emergency communication services between Fulton County, Georgia, and the city of South Fulton.
You the speaker, how are you?
How are you doing, Jeff?
Good, sir. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Joe Bearaswee, and I'm, uh, I'm gonna start by saying I'm the city of South Fulton's Director of Emergency Services. And then my mic, sorry. Um, I will tell you that we're, this is the same agreement we have with the city of Union City, Palmetto, Fairburn, Chinooki Hills. Um, we dispatch for twelve law enforcement agencies, fire, and EMS services. Um, this has been a long-time partnership, and, um, we run a regional nine-one-one center. And, um, about, in the last three and a half years, I've been with the county three years and eight months now. And, um, the last three years, we've had several news articles written about us. We have, uh, outperformed all of our county neighbors, um, Cobb, Gwinnett, and others. Um, we maintain probably one of the highest satisfaction ratings of any nine-one-one center in the metro area. The way I look at this is, our partnership just continues to grow. Um, the police chief and the fire chief are both here, and, um, I will tell you from, um, from the tornado that occurred the other night, and going out there and serving almost four hundred meals at seven o'clock at night, to, um, getting a phone call at three o'clock in the morning that a firefighter was injured, um, we're here. We are, we work for you. And, um, and I encourage anybody that's on this council, come downtown and see the nine-one-one center, see what our folks do. Um, it's an outstanding group of people. Uh, this is not my quote, but I always say nine-eleven started with nine-one-one. And, um, a lot of people don't really realize that we're the true first responders. And, uh, as we're the, we're the first people to provide first aid and CPR sometimes on the phone, emergency medical dispatch on the phone. Um, we're sometimes unfortunately the last call on the last breath somebody hears. Um, I will quote, um, during nine-eleven, a dispatch supervisor from the NYPD, uh, that the only thing she can do was pray with folks, because they knew that there was no other outlet for them at that point. So with that said, I again encourage and invite you all to come downtown and see your folks in action, because it truly is an amazing operation.
I wanna add, you know, uh, that when it came to transitioning our police home, nine-one-one was super. I mean, they were right there on the scene with us, helping us in every way. There was a lot of problem, technical problems, you know, I'm not an IT person, but you know, the computer wasn't talking right. And, uh, Joe and those, Joe and those jumped in there, and they made it happen. So thank you so much for what you did for us, and continue to do for us.
Yes, sir.
You know, in the transition of our police department, thank you so much.
I'm still recovering, it's six AM now. You don't work all night anymore, and still recover quickly, but yes.
I think Ms. Gillyard has questions.
Well, the questions that I have really pertain to the agreement, to the IGA, that I want the attorney to thoroughly vet, to make sure, um, that it's a little bit better than the IGA agreement we have now. Um, so I am deferring to her.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that, that, those are the issues that I have, all the gray areas, um, that I can point out to you a little bit later on. And so, because I do have this concern, I don't know what we do at this point. Do, in the sense it really is an emergency.
Right.
So since, do we pass it in lieu of A, B, C, and D, or how, how, what do you recommend?
So the county attorney's office provided a copy of this agreement. I did have the opportunity to go through this agreement in its entirety, and I can tell you the amendments that I made. Uh, fortunately, I presented our proposed amendments to the county attorney's office, and they have advised me that the county accepted our proposed amendments. And I can, if you want, I can tell you what, uh, those, those substantial items were. If you look in your agenda packet, page ninety-five, you have a copy of the nine-one-one services agreement. And if you look at the items in red, those are the changes that I made, made to the agreement. So essentially, this is a three-year agreement, the term is one year, but three, it's three automatic renewal years, so it's essentially three years, and it's for the county to provide nine-one-one services. The major change that I made, the first major change was page one oh three. The county put a provision in here saying that you guys would need to indemnify them in the event that they were sued pursuant to actions under this agreement. And if anyone's sued, it's m- most likely gonna be you being sued, because they're doing the service on your behalf. So I just added language saying that similarly, if you were sued, that they need to indemnify you, because it's gonna be pretty much them doing, offering the services, and they agreed to that, they accepted to indemnify you in, in the extent, to, to the event that you were sued because of something that they do on your behalf. If you look at, uh, the event of default, it's on that same page. They identified what constitutes a default, and their language was, this, a default shall be as follows. And I just changed it to say, uh, default shall include as follows, because there may be some things on here that we consider a default that we don't want sp- specifically defined. So this basically just makes it general to where you can allege that other items are a default. And if you look at page one oh four, as far as termination, you can terminate this agreement for two reasons. One being the county engaging in an action of default that's defined under here. And pretty much an action of default by the county would be them exercising a material breach of this agreement and then not curing that breach, because this agreement gives them the opportunity to cure. So if you see something that they're doing that, that you're upset with, you do have the good faith responsibility under this agreement to reach out to them and say, look, you're not supposed to be doing this. And if they do not cure within thirty days, then that would be a default, or that would be a reason to terminate the agreement. Your other ability to terminate would be if the, if you decide that, look, we don't wanna contract for these services anymore, and then you just give them notice, we're not gonna, uh, we're gonna provide these services ourself, or we're gonna go with this other service provider, and you do have the, the ability to do that. So you can terminate on those grounds. So I modified that language, and... The final thing that I modified.
I just wanted to add something. The oversight of this agreement, the oversight members, from your police department, your, your leaders, are the oversight of this agreement. So we meet monthly with the leadership of both fire department and police department. And so if that were to be a notification issue, they, they have a service level agreement that they review every month. They get sent a service level of what we perform, and they have the ability to, the complete oversight and the vote of any changes come from, including our internal policies.
I, I do wanna make a point, though, because these, something like this bothers me, because the amount of the contract is one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So I don't know where that number came from. I don't know why it's not two million, or half a million. So that's the first issue. And then the second one is, we'll send you an invoice, and when we send you the invoice monthly, pay us a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. But an invoice is only a request for payment, it is not support for why you want me to send that payment to you. But an invoice is only a request for payment. It is not support for why you want me to send that payment to you. So, as it relates to the money kinda issues, you know, that makes me a little nervous.
I can give you some insights on that. So it is a reduction in the cost that you're actually paying now, and it's based on the number of calls and the volume related to our partnership with Fulton County. And so, I don't remember the exact number before, but I think it's a fairly substantial decrease in cost.
Over two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
As you're in the cost, it's one point eight seven five, and it's now one point six five.
So, will they send the invoice, are they going to, does the invoice, is it going to say anything to the effect of X number of calls or any kind of support, or?
I can finish that, sir. So every month you get a, well, depending, all of our other cities all pay on a yearly basis, so they give us one payment. But every month, you get, actually, you can ask, the fire chief that's sitting here, he gets a report, whether he was with the county or now with the city. They get a report every month of everything that we do. So every call for service, our statistic information, whether or not we meet our ninety percentile, which is our goal rate, ninety percentile of our answering the calls, and our ability to process calls in a certain amount of time. Both your leaders of both those agencies get a monthly report. Whether you pay us yearly, or quarterly, or monthly, doesn't matter. They get a monthly performance report from us. All right, Ms. Robb.
I think she raised a lot of my questions, but in one particular provision I'd like us to look at or amend, is it automatic renewal? I'm okay with option years, but as exercising, but I'd like to amend it.
If I could, if I could speak to the automatic renewal. If at any point you don't want to continue, the way this is worded, you can discontinue the services. For example, the first year, if you want it to end the services and not have the contract go automatically into the second contract year, then you would just need to give them that ninety-day notice. So the way it's set up, you give notice, and if you don't give notice, then the county will assume that you want the contract to continue that second year, and then they will keep services operating under that assumption. So you do have the ability, the way it's currently worded, to end the contract any year during that three-year process.
So you just include this provision, some ensure accountability against our...
Correct, exactly.
And some of the reason for that is some of our growth. So in other words, if we have to purchase something, for example, we had to revamp our entire phone system, so that was a million dollars. We have to plan for that three to five years out. Technology is changing. We're rolling out text and nine-one-one. Problem is, we have to commit to vendors sometimes two and three years out, just to make sure that we're not behind. 'Cause once we fall behind, it took the county twenty years to get recovered. We were still operating a lot of technology from the Olympics. We're now state-of-the-art. I mean, I'll tell you, we, come down, please, and take a look, 'cause we really are, it's a proud place to be. And it's important, because technology, right now, if you dial nine-one-one, would you expect us to know where you're at today? And we just started phase-two nine-one-one in all of the south areas of the county. So now, when that little blue dot shows up on your phone, we can see where you are, and that's a very large accomplishment. But technology and the cost has to be, we look at it three to five years out, otherwise we're behind.
Mr. Manager, a couple things. Number one is, a copy of the monthly report, I think it would be appropriate if all the council got a copy of the monthly report. Second thing is, if you could arrange it between you and Joe, that members of the council who want to go down to nine-one-one...
Absolutely.
And view what they do, if we could arrange that, I think that would be appropriate to us to do.
We're open twenty-four hours. Better parking at three a.m.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, I will add in too, that the county initially had in here that if you terminate, that you just lose the money for, 'cause they have you paying in advance. And they had if you terminate, there was no provision saying where you had to give the money back. But I did ask, as part of a condition for you accepting this, that you be entitled to reimburse them for any paid monies from the termination date up to the remainder, that you've already paid them. And they've agreed to do that, so if you do terminate, you're not gonna have to pay for months from that termination date for the remainder of the term.
Right, that's good. Okay, Joe, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to execute an intergovernmental agreement for nine-one-one emergency communication services between Fulton County and the city of South Fulton.
Are all those things you talked about in this council are part of that amendment?
Yes, they have accepted my amended version completely. I have the county's signatures.
Good, good. Properly move the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? That's your name, Mr. Baker. The next one is at the top of page two, an IGA for the provision of eight-hundred megahertz radio system access and records management system, RMS, between Fulton County and the city of South Fulton.
This agreement is for access to the county's radio system. So today, it's the same. We have twenty-eight agencies on it, and it's a shared cost and model. So the cost of every radio that's operated or held by Public Safety and some non-public safety agencies. So the cost of the radio access is three hundred and fifty dollars a year per radio, and that gives them access to a regional radio system. Public Safety is paramount. I mean, we run the largest radio system in the state of Georgia. Our folks support it, so if there's an issue, that cost also includes our techs responding to a scene. Fire, last year, we had an incident where multiple fire departments came to a scene. Our techs respond out to that scene and support the fire operation at that point. It's the same way we've been operating thus far, and we're just trying to continue the same level of service.
Council, do you have any?
Yeah, this one was pretty straightforward. You are paying fourteen thousand monthly with this. It has pretty much the same terms as the prior agreement that we went through. And the only significant change that I made to this one was, the county had here that if they provide you with, if they provide you with additional radio units, that you would be responsible for that cost. And my concern was, a worst-case scenario, they wanna upgrade their fleet and then provide that to you, and there that cost on you. So I put in here that if they provide you with additional units, then you actually request those units, and they can incur that cost to you.
So if you were to add a twenty-five police officers, you need twenty-five radios, then we charge for the twenty-five additional radios to the cost.
Correct, but they couldn't just upgrade.
Yeah, we can't just add...
I got you, I got you. We have to respond first.
And tell them that we're requesting these new units.
I got you, I got you. Ms. Jack, can you handle that?
I got clarity myself.
Okay. Mr. Kuee?
I think the battery may be about to go out. I wanna say, I wanted to just give our attorney a shout-out. I know that we just brought you on a month ago, but I think these two, the work that you've done, just with these two agreements, but with everything, just shows that you have just been excellent. And so, thank you for being excellent.
Okay, any other? Okay. Did I, did I get a motion on that? Not yet.
I'd like to... I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for provision of the radio system access and recommendation between Fulton County and the city of South Fulton.
Properly move the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Robb? Oh, she ready to go home? Mr. Baker? Okay, that's what we... That she didn't have him. Is that the executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into the executive session for personnel.
I just wanna say that I don't know what we did tonight to get to this room at quarter of nine. I hope we keep doing it, and we... The last meeting, I got home at eleven forty-four.
It's called, it's called hush. Okay, did I, did we get the motion? All in favor? Now close, is that closed?
Executive session is set.
Properly move the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, it's good. Okay.
I think he was supposed to announce what...